... two thousand and fifteen meeting of the Jackson City Council to order, and if you would, we're going to ask Councilman Johnny Dodd to leave us in an invocation and pledge, if you would, please write.
Lord, we come here today to say thank you for letting us in another day, Lord. Yes, Lord, please give us knowledge, wisdom, and make the right decision for our city. If I were actually to protect our city as a whole, Lord, give us a vision to make sure that we make the right decision to make our city as safe and safe. Well, we actually just, that's the council, one by one, and all collected it as a group with all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pray that Jesus will be the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe I think you can show all council members present. Oh, no, you can show Council One, flip. Absolutely, I'm sorry, I missed her.
She'll be disappointed.
Item four is approval of minutes of the March third, two thousand and fifteen City Council meeting, and council members received a copy of those minutes, unless there's any corrections or additions, we'll just declare those minutes approved. Item five is the invitation for public comment. If there's anyone present who would like to be heard on any item under new business, if you would let it be known at that time. We have, we have about four proclamations this morning, so I'm going to come down and start on those, and let me ask Susan Sumner to come up from the President of Jackson Area Business and Professional Women, and have anybody come up with her if you'd like. Thank y'all for being here. And the red, y'all wear the red very well. This proclamation for Equal Pay Day, whereas fifty-two years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, women and people of color continue to suffer the consequences of an equitable pay differential, and whereas according to statistics released in two thousand and thirteen by the U.S. Census Bureau, year-round full-time working women in two thousand and twelve earned only seventy-seven percent of the earnings of year-round full-time working men, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. Whereas graduating to a pay gap, the earnings of women and men, one year after college graduation, by the American Association of University Women, published in two thousand and twelve, establishes a five percent pay gap between female and college male, college graduates, who are working full-time one year after graduation. The report uses the latest nationally representative data, compares and applies to apples to apples by looking at the pay gap after controlling for various factors known to affect earnings, such as occupation, college major, and hours worked. It also examines one immediate effect that the pay gap has on many women, the heavy burden of student loan debt. And whereas two thousand and twelve AAUW research also establishes that the pay gap widens over time, so that by age sixty-five, women earn sixty-five percent of what their male peers earn. And whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors, and whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy, and whereas Tuesday, April the fourteenth, symbolizes the time of the next year, in which the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, we, Jerry, Guest Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, as Equal Pay Day in Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourages businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. It's an honor for me to present this, and always thank you for your awareness on Equal Pay Day. Dr. McMillan, address the council. Okay, thank you all. Y'all want a good picture? Y'all want a picture?
I did.
Oh, you did? Oh, good. Thank you all. Let me ask Sherri Cole, that's the kind of director of services, Exchange Club, Carle Perkins Center for Prevention of Child Abuse, to come up for the next proclamation. This is proclamation to Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Y'all come on out. Get in here, quick. There you go. Whereas we need to recognize that child abuse and neglect is a serious and growing problem that changes life's path for nearly four million of our nation's children annually. And whereas this problem, which has reached epidemic proportions in all regions of our nation, respects no racial, religious, socio-economic, or geographic boundaries, and can prevent children from following the road to a successful future, whereas we need to take steps to educate the public on child abuse and its causes. And whereas Exchange Club, Carle Perkins Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse, through its parent training, educational programs, and community service activities, believes that parents and community members need to be the everyday superheroes in preventing and dealing with child abuse to improve the quality of family life for our children and families. Now therefore, we, Jerry, Guest Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April, two thousand and fifteen, as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to use this time to better understand, recognize, and respond to this grievous problem, as the center helps our families go the extra mile to prevent abuse. Now we further commend Exchange Club, Carle Perkins Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse for its contingent's success in helping families break free from the cycle of abuse, and urge full public support of their successful efforts. Thank y'all for everything you do for our country. Great awareness, but we'd like to...
Thank you. I would just like to say that this year, our theme is being everyday superhero to a child. In order to make our community stronger, we need to make families stronger, and so I urge all of you to take a stand against child abuse. Do whatever you can to be a hero to a child, and that way, we can all make Jackson a better place to live. Thank you.
Your next proclamation is the Jackson Arts Council Arts Coalition Day, and we have Linda Hearn, Steve Raper, and Monty Jones. She'll come up, and I'll read this proclamation and make it part of the record. Again, it's proclamation for Jackson Arts Council Arts Coalition Day. Whereas the Jackson Arts Council was chartered by the State of Tennessee on December thirteenth, nineteen sixty-seven, for the purpose of connecting and strengthening the arts. And whereas the Jackson Arts Council Arts Coalition was organized in March of two thousand and one, with the overall objective of overseeing the effort made on behalf of the Arts Council to grow, professionalize, and stabilize the organizations in the coalition, whereas the mission of the Arts Coalition of the Jackson Arts Council is to advance the arts through cooperation, education, communication, and support. Whereas the Arts Coalition seeks to promote understanding of the arts through education, public awareness of the arts, greater support for the art, and networking and cooperation among the arts groups. And whereas the Arts Coalition's membership includes forty-five agencies and organizations that are Madison County nonprofit or public entities, organize organizations whose primary purpose is art or have a designated continuing arts program within the organization or present art projects. Whereas we wish to recognize all of those who participate in and support the mission and goals of the Jackson Arts Council Arts Coalition. Now therefore, I, Jerry, Guest Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim April the seventh, two thousand and fifteen, as Jackson Arts Council Arts Coalition Day, and I encourage all Jacksonians to support this organization and its noble mission. So, thank you all for what you do for the arts in our city.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the forty-plus art groups that are in our Arts Coalition of the Jackson Arts Council, we are honored to have this special recognition on behalf of Mayor Guest. Thank y'all so much. You'll hear from us again.
Okay, your final proclamation, Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and y'all, as you've come up on your second trip up here, if you would. Always appreciative of what y'all do as social awareness, sexual assault, and city. Okay, this is proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention back to sexual violence as widespread, and has public health implications for every community member of the City of Jackson and County of Madison. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our communities, it seems by statistics indicating that one in five women will have experienced sexual assault by the time they complete college. And whereas we must work together to educate our communities about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors. Whereas staff and volunteers of the Women's Resource and Rape Assistance Program encourage every person to speak out from witnessing acts of violence, however small. And whereas with leadership, dedication, encouragement, there's compelling evidence that we can successfully reduce sexual violence in the City of Jackson and County of Madison through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And whereas the City of Jackson, County of Madison strongly support the effort of the national, state, and local partners and of every citizens to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. And urge all citizens to join RAP, and all support services programs, and believe that all community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence. It's an honor to present this to you on behalf of the city of Jackson.
RAP is truly grateful to Mayor Guest, to the council, and to the Mayor's Council on Domestic and Sexual Violence for their support, to our community for your ongoing support of our efforts to address the issues of domestic and sexual violence in our community. I urge the community, one of the best ways you can help us moving forward is to start by believing. When someone tells you they've been, she or he has been the victim of sexual assault, don't ask them, "Where have you been? What were you doing? Why were you there? What were you wearing?" Instead, just believe them, and find out what you can do to help them get the help they need, and to hold the perpetrator of that abuse accountable. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want me to come down there?
Item seven is first reading, and we have none. Item eight is second reading. Wants consideration ordinance is to amend the text, official code of the City of Jackson relative to Title VII, Fire Protection and Fireworks, Title XII, Building Utility, etc. Codes, and Title fourteen, Zoning and Land Use Control. Chapter four, Sign Control, to adopt the two thousand and twelve additions of the International Fire and Building Codes, and to make various amendments to the sign code. Council has approved this ordinance on first reading already.
Who's the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. If not, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Also under second reading, consideration ordinance adopting and enacting supplemental and replacement pages to municipal codes, the City of Jackson, Tennessee Council, again, has approved this on first reading.
So move.
We have a motion and a second discussion from council. Council please vote. Item nine, it's new business, and Jackson Arts Council presentation by Executive Director Linda Hearn, Steve Raper, and Monty Jones, if y'all will come up for your presentation. Thank you all for being here. Morning.
Good morning.
On behalf of the Jackson Arts Council, we are appreciative of this opportunity to express our gratitude for the support, for your support for the funding of the Jackson Arts Council. We have several arts supporters with us this morning, and at this time, I'd like to recognize them by asking them to stand up.
Thank you all for being here.
It's wonderful support. Did you know that the Arts Council has been connecting and strengthening the arts since December of nineteen sixty-seven? We have been re-granting state funds in West Tennessee for more than a decade. We believe that the arts are an important policy asset and prosperity generator for our community. In addition to their inherent value to society, the arts offer a distinctive blend of benefits, such as economic drivers, educational assets, health and wellness, civic catalysts, and cultural legacies. Like to introduce our board president, Steve Raper.
Morning. Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you, Mayor Guest and the council, and just a couple of comments about the impact to our community, particularly on the economic impact. But through our grant, competitive grant program, eight local groups, arts groups, have received over twelve thousand dollars in grant, granted funds, and over ten thousand dollars in state funds. The bottom line is that that's created an economic impact to our community of over six point eight million dollars, and over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in government revenue. With that said, we don't want to take any more time than necessary, but I want to turn it over to Monty.
Okay, good morning, thank you.
Good morning, Monty.
If you've ever attended the Jackson Symphony Starlight Symphony, the Ballet Arts Nutcracker Presentation, a Jackson Coral Society Concert, or anything at the Jackson Theater Guild, then you've personally experienced the impact of the Jackson Arts Council and the impact it's made in our community. And it's important that we extend our thanks to the city council. So, thank you so much for being a significant part of the work that we do here, and thank you very much for the funding that you provide to us.
Thank you, guys, for what you do. Any questions or comments from council? If not, thank y'all very much for your presentation. Appreciate what you do for our city. Okay, item two, under new business is presentation by Star Center President Dave Bratcher, job replacement specialist Kelly Sorrell, and Director of Learning Lab Karen Tully. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor Guest, members of the council, thank you for allowing us an opportunity to just come. We feel like it's our obligation to come before you as the body who provides funding to us, and just give you an update on some of the things that we've used that funding for. I'm thankful to serve on behalf of our Board of Directors and our staff, the amazing clients that we have the privilege of serving, we say thank you. No person can do this alone, and I've got two highly qualified folks here today to just give you an update on a couple of the areas, one being education, the other, excuse me, being our learning lab specifically, and also the employment placement that the Star Center does. And so first, I'm going to ask Kelly to just give us, the council, an update. We provided a handout that gives you some of the numbers, but just wanted Kelly to share a little bit about the employment placement here in our city.
Mayor Guest and council, thank you so much for your time today and allowing us to come. I want to say thank you personally for giving us the opportunity to serve the clients that we serve. We do cover the entire part of West Tennessee and serve, you can see, we in Employment Services have served over a hundred people, nearly a hundred and forty people in our community since last July, specifically in this county, we've served over, right at fifty people, and have put a number of people to work. It helps us, what you provide to us, helps us in completing our mission, which is to help any person with any disability in realizing their potential. I know in a, in a city and a county that we live in, striving to grow and make it a better place to live, employment is a high priority for all of us as employers, as a city, and as a community, allowing people to realize their potential through going to work and finding employment and finding services that can help them, being a productive citizen in society, is of high importance. And we thank you for your support to help us in that, in that deed.
Thank you, Karen.
And Karen comes to us retired from Hardin County as the Director of Special Ed there for many years, and she is responsible for our learning lab, and first of all, thanks to the city for all of the funding for public education in this county. But one of the things that we provide comes alongside of public education. So Karen, can you share a little bit about learning lab?
Sure. It's an honor to get to work here in Jackson at the Star Center. And when I was in the school system, I used to hear a lot of parents talk about wanting to bring their kids to the Star Center from a lot of areas in West Tennessee. And I wondered what was so special about the Star Center. Now that I'm there, I get to know. The Star Center is a good, safe place for kids to work on the skills that they're having some struggle with. Not every child we see has an identified disability, but all of the students that we see come in do have a struggle in some academic area. The school system does an awesome job, and we're a supplement to the school system. When the children come to us, instead of being that child who's struggling, or that child who's having a hard time in class, they're one of a lot of people who are working on something that they need to learn to do better. The kids don't feel different when they're there, and they're not ashamed of, "Oh, I can't read that so well," or "I'm not very good at working these algebra problems." They're working on the thing that they're weak on, just like kids beside them are working on the things they're weak on. So it's a, it's a safe place, because everybody's working on something. None of your peers from the school day are seeing that weakness. You're with a whole different group of people. So the Star Center is a great place for kids. We have children from five to an adult or two who's already out of school, working with us on getting skills they need to be successful in life. And it's a pleasure to work with these kids, and you have some really sharp kids in Madison County. We have one child now who's in the gifted program, but she wants to maintain that above-grade level performance, and so she's coming to work on beyond grade-level skills and have enrichment. So I'm enjoying working at the Star Center and being in Jackson very much. Thank you for this opportunity.
Just to piggyback on what Karen said, one student who was about five grade levels behind, was fifteen years old, had dyslexia, it wasn't treated, began to work at the Star Center, and a year and a half is now on grade level, will be the first, the first person in that family to ever attend college, recently took the ACT, and so the reality of the funding is that not everybody that comes to Star has the ability to pay. And so we extend scholarships to those who can't. And so we want to just say again, thank you for allowing us to live into our mission where every person with any disability has the opportunity to realize their potential. Thank you again.
Great. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it, Star Center. Okay, item three, under new business is consideration to lease between West Tennessee Healthcare and the City of Jackson at five twelve Roland for Safe Hope Family Justice Center. Captain? Morning, sir.
The hospital's prepared and took out a review and a lease agreement for the, what used to be the Women's Clinic, and then it was Sports Plus Rehab at five twelve Roland, to be used as the site for the Safe Hope Center, and that is our Family Justice Center renamed. Has everybody been able to put over the agreement?
They've had it for a while, yeah, yeah.
Essentially, the hospital will lease that to the city at no cost. They've also agreed to maintain the insurance and all in the building itself, how the city will be responsible for its contents, the, they're doing the maintenance on the outside of the building, and I believe maintaining the fire alarm system.
Very appreciative of West Tennessee Healthcare, Bobby Arlenoff, his staff, for making that building available for this, this critical use. Mike, you want to take just a second and explain the mission of Safe Hope House for the council? Jennifer, Jennifer, is there? Jennifer, you want to come up? And she's already been appointed, on the job and working.
Yes, she's been working hard with this.
She is.
Could not have done it without her, that's for sure.
So if y'all would take just, just a couple of minutes and allow for the council exactly what we're going to be doing there, and the mission, if you would.
Okay, I didn't wear my glasses, so I can't really see. And I don't have it committed to memory. But the mission of the Safe Hope Center is to end family violence in Jackson and Madison County, and our vision is to create a future in our community where family and sexual assault is ended, where families heal and thrive, where children, families, and elders live free from fear, and where hope is realized. And the purpose of the Safe Hope Center is to provide a place where victims of domestic and sexual violence can come and receive every service they need in one location. So if they need to meet with law enforcement, prosecutors, West Tennessee Legal Services, RAP, everyone will be co-located there, working together as a team, so that the victims don't have to go to five different places, retell their story, and be re-traumatized over and over. And what these family justice centers have shown across the country is increased successful prosecution of perpetrators, increased safety for victims, increased number of victims who seek services, because we make it easier for them. So we're so excited and thankful to you all, to the city, to West Tennessee Healthcare, to Captain Holt for writing the grant to help plan this Family Justice Center.
And we're what, one of two statewide, or is, are we the only one?
We're, I think we will be the fifth one to go after.
The fifth one, okay.
The three major cities started, and then we were in the second round. Memphis actually got theirs under a direct federal grant. The others have been started under the governor's public safety. Governor Haslam's plan. Nashville, Knoxville, Chattanooga, and then in this round, we're with Johnson City and...
Black County? No, it's Black County. One of those counties over in East Tennessee.
I can tell you that we're very, after meeting with them last week, or week before last, in training, we are very much, very much further ahead than they are, and even on par with some of the ones that have previously been activated. This, we're hoping this will help us, especially in the criminal justice system, because the system unintentionally makes it very difficult, or makes it very easy for victims to become frustrated and ultimately stop cooperating. They don't have this, they may come into the law enforcement system but not get the support services. Even though we tell them about it, they still have to be able to get there. They have to make an appointment with somebody else. They have to travel to different places in town, and hopefully by having this all combined, we'll have victims that will be more property of prosecution, but also that will become resilient, be able to get out of this, use these services to get out of their situation.
In addition to that one building, I think the West Tennessee Healthcare have made available some additional residential areas for, for residential care during, in sexual abuse and domestic violence situations. So they went, went, they went beyond this one building and drifted over into some other. We're very, very appreciative of them allowing the city to use this building and all the agencies that are in there. How many different agencies do we have collaborating in this?
As we, as we start, as actually occupying the building, it'll be the Police Department and RAP. Now, there will be offices there for some of the allied agencies to come in and work with victims, as we call them down there. They may not be based on site, but West Tennessee Legal Services, DCS... They may not be based on site, but West Tennessee Legal Services, DCS, District Attorney's Office, Pathways, and several other entities that we hope will work with us in that building.
Okay. Council has a copy of the lease, and the attorney is here if you all have any questions about it.
Captain, if I heard you correctly, we're the only one in West Tennessee.
Shelby County has.
We're only in West Tennessee, Shelby.
Yeah, yeah. That's Eastern Arlington.
Yeah. You're not part of the West.
We are. And we, we, Jackson swings a pretty wide loop in West Tennessee. Our sexual assault nurse examiners, again, by the grace of West Tennessee Healthcare, serve all the rural counties in West Tennessee, not just, not just Jackson. And they'll see on average about a hundred and twenty sexual assault victims a year from all over West Tennessee.
Motion to approve. We have a motion for approval, the lease, and second. Any additional discussion by council? Not council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you, Captain. Appreciate you all. Thank you for what you do. Item four, under New Business, is consideration to Falling Street for Acceptance of Brookley Estates, Section 1, Channel Creek Drive, and Little Brook Lane. Is there a motion for?
So moved.
So we have a motion, a second. Discussion from council. Council please vote.
And the vote is passes with Aiden Fager and what else?
Pepper voted and took it back. He's voting for it. He voted yes. Everybody voted yes.
Do we have an accurate count? For the record only. Okay, we have, okay, thank you. Item five, under New Business, consideration to Falling Street for Acceptance, Stan Stone Village, Phase 2, Section 3, and Phase 3A, Palms Pugh Drive.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second. Discussion from council. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Stan. Item six is consideration of board appointment, West Tennessee Healthcare Board, the reappointment of Greg Mylan.
So moved.
Motion, the second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
The Code Advisory Appeals Board, the reappointments of Ron Smith, Hal Crocker, and Wendy Baxter Ryan.
Move.
Second.
Motion for approval, second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
And for the Jackson Transit Authority, the reappointment of Carol Dix.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion from council. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
And for the Jackson Madison County Historic Zoning Commission, the reappointment of Sammy West.
So moved.
Motion, second. Discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you, council. Item seven, Bill, Budget Amendments.
Okay, the first budget amendment that we have today is for Bemis Park in the amount of $23,000 to cover A and E services for the park that is being designed. And this will be a draw on fund balance and capital.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion? Council please.
Will they start working on it?
That would be, Mr. Black's bricks coming down. Will they start working on the park?
Got to get it down first. They're still in the process. Ms. Councilwoman Flitton might have the best description of that.
It's got to tear it down. It's old for a while.
Lot of brick.
Maybe a year. Maybe.
Okay.
Did we take a vote on that one?
Yep. Do we vote? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Council please vote.
Ms. Chairman, would I be in order to ask Mr. Black of the update for Falls Hill Park, would there be a light, security light there? Thank you, sir.
Okay, second budget amendment.
The second amendment that you received this morning is for $12,500, which is the city's match for the sirens to be replaced at Jackson Madison County General Hospital for the AMA.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Discussion from council. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay, before we go to, thank you, Karen. Before we go to our mate, I think Councilman Dodd has a couple of folks he'd like to recognize.
I would like for Quentin Green and Steph Bailey, please stand. They are part of the Jackson Meps County Youth Advisory Committee, representing our city. We thank you all for coming out.
Thank you for being here. Okay, the final is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.